6:34 PM and I'll call the regular session of the San Gabriel City Council to order. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by myself. Please, please stand and face the Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, and ever being just as eternal.
Alright, thank you everyone. Roll call please.
Mayor Poo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Liao.
Here.
Okay, next is approval of agenda order. Is there a motion or any recommendations?
Motion approved.
Motion second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any objection? Seeing none, the agenda order is so approved. And next we have presentations. Please introduce the first item.
Item A is introduction of City Clerk Department Administrative Assistant Two Jessica Zhao. Have her come up to the podium please. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Jessica Zhao, whom I stole from the city of Alhambra.
(laughing)
She has also worked for the city of Arcadia. Jessica has a BA in sociology and communications from UC San Diego and speaks Mandarin. A resident of San Gabriel, she enjoys swimming, watching movies, and walking her dog. Please join me in welcoming Jessica to the San Gabriel team. (applause)
Thank you, thank you so much for welcoming me here to the city of San Gabriel. I'm so grateful for this opportunity to work for this community that I grew up personally loving and growing up in and I'm just so happy to be able to contribute to the city that gave me everything that I am today. I'm just happy to be who I am today because of this. And I'm so grateful to be a part of the City Clerk team here. I've felt nothing but happy and welcomed by everyone here at the city of San Gabriel and I really love it here. So I know that this is going to be one great chapter of my life here at San Gabriel. Thank you so much.
Welcome Jessica. We're all looking forward to working with you and it's so great to have some of our, you know, native daughters come back and serve the community in the way that you have. Thank you. Yeah. Next item please.
Item B is introduction of Community Services Manager Lucy Hakobian. Presentation will be made by Community Services Interim Mission Playhouse Director Rebecca Perez. Good evening Mayor Poo and members of the City Council.
Good evening.
I am very pleased to introduce the newest member of the Community Services Department team, Community Services Manager Lucy Hakobian. Lucy has spent the past 25 years with the city of South Pasadena. Starting off as a typist clerk in 1993, she managed the front desk operation of the senior center, including dispatching for the dialeride program, classes, events, nutrition program, and much more. She was then promoted to Department Secretary with added responsibilities of creating the monthly newsletter and overseeing staff. Her willingness to dive in and learn more afforded her the promotion of Community Services Coordinator in 1998 where she oversaw facility rentals, citywide special events such as concerts in the park, and overseeing the city's leisure classes. With years of experience, she became the Community Services Supervisor in 2013 where she oversaw the recreation division by managing capital improvement projects, after-school programs, and summer camps, and field reservations, citywide special events, and more. She was the staff liaison to the youth commission and highly involved with the community on various endeavors. Lucy started as the Community Services Manager with us on May 28th and she has quickly become a part of our team. Lucy will manage the Community Services Department, including supervision of staff, working on special events, programs, special projects, and budget, and provide support to the director. Please join me in welcoming Lucy, a girl on a mission.
Thank you Rebecca. Good evening Honorable Mayor Poo, City Council, and city staff. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am honored and humbled to have had this opportunity to serve as Community Services Manager and I'm excited to be part of the city of San Gabriel team. I already feel like a family and I look forward to meeting and working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Welcome to you Lucy. Looking forward to working with you as well. Sounds like you have a lot of relevant experience that we need so early here in our Community Services Department, so thank you. Next item please.
Item C is introduction of Mission Playhouse Manager Elias Borjeli. Presentation will be made again by Director Rebecca Perez. Good evening once again. You're going to get a little bit of my introductions tonight, so.
That's fantastic.
I am very pleased to introduce the newly appointed manager of the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse Elias Borjeli. Elias has spent the past 15 years working at the Mission Playhouse. He initially began his career here while still in high school as one of our part-time seasonal stage crew members. In 2017 Elias took on a full-time position at the Mission Playhouse as the event coordinator. As he acquainted himself with the operation of the playhouse, Elias noticed several areas that could be optimized. In his role at the time Elias redeveloped the paperwork processing and cut booking times from two hours to 15 minutes. In the same year Elias organized our routine summer maintenance at the Mission Playhouse and led the team to complete more projects in that one month than in the past five years combined. Soon after Elias was promoted to Production Supervisor where he continued to oversee all production and maintenance needs at the playhouse. He continually found ways of optimizing procedures and finding creative ways of accommodating all of our clients' needs. Last summer Elias was asked to step into the Acting Manager position where he was tasked with continuing the operational business of the playhouse. In that time Elias has stepped up and filled in whenever there was a gap in staffing or a problem that needed to be solved. Elias is excited to continue his work at the Mission Playhouse as he continues his career with us. In his spare time, because there's not much of it, Elias is a pyrotechnician and enjoys performing firework shows, so this is a busy time of year for him. He also has his pilot's license and enjoys flying single-engine Cessna airplanes. He is hoping to one day have a plane to call his own. Please join me in welcoming Elias.
Thank you everybody for having me here again. It's been a pleasure so far working with all of you. It's kind of bittersweet that all of you know my name already, which is frightening a little bit, but awesome. So thank you so much for everything that you all do for us and I hope to be able to work with you all as we move forward. Thank you.
Congratulations Elijah. Sorry, apparently I don't know your name yet. No, congratulations Elias and there's nothing to be afraid of. I mean, obviously you wouldn't have been promoted if we didn't like what you were doing, right? So thanks for your already many years of service and we're looking forward to many great things at the Mission Playhouse. Please keep us informed of, you know, all the things that are going on there. You know, definitely welcome input and feedback, you know, from staff. And here it comes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, next please. This is going to be Rebecca and later on the chief. You know, you guys are tag teaming for all the presentations today.
Item D, Parks Make Life Better Proclamation. Presentation will be made by Director Perez. Good evening once again. I promise this is the last time you will hear from me tonight. So we appreciate you supporting our mission by proclaiming July 2019 as Parks Make Life Better Month. The Community Services Department strives to make San Gabriel a great place to live, work, and play by providing quality programs, services, special events, and parks and facilities planning. In addition, we work closely with our public works staff who maintain the parks and facilities so our residents have clean and safe places to play. These efforts would not be possible without the support of a team which includes the City Council, staff, volunteers, and the residents whom we serve. We are especially pleased to have you recognize our mission this year as we have recently completed the new Kaboom Project Kaboom Playground at Smith Park and will soon be completing the playground at Vincent Lugo Park. This is also important as we have just completed the community outreach portion and will be submitting the Prop 68 grant application for enhancements at Smith Park next month. The grant application being due next month. Hopefully we'll be submitting and working on those improvements very soon, presuming that the funding comes through. There are a lot of exciting things happening with our programs and parks and we're so proud to be a part of it. For this year's celebration of Parks Make Life Better Month, we are partnering with the San Gabriel Library once again to have an awesome family concert and movie as part of our Summer Night Series and that will be not this week but next week. We invite you to join us for that event where we're going to have Disney music and a Disney movie that night. So thank you again for this.
Thank you Rebecca and we do have the proclamation here. You know, parks are such an integral part of our community and the Community Services Department does such a great job with all of the recreational programs, programs for seniors, programs for youth, programs for, you know, everybody, you know, of all ages and from all segments of the community as well. So it's always a pleasure to have this proclamation and have July be Parks Make Life Better Month. And then also I'm glad you're partnering with the library because the LA County Libraries just won a national award for among the best library systems in the country. So congratulations to Julie and the libraries for that. With that, this says, "The San Gabriel City Council hereby proclaims July 2019 as Parks Make Life Better Month and in doing so urges all citizens to use and enjoy its parks and recreation opportunities." Will the council please join me for the presentation? Next please.
Item E is the 25th Annual National Night Out Proclamation. Presentation will be made by Crime Prevention Officer Stacy Gutierrez.
Good evening Honorable Mayor Poo and members of council. We are here today to give thanks for your continuous support and present to you our National Night Out polo shirts. This year we will be celebrating our 25th Annual National Night Event on Tuesday, August 6th from 9:00 to 5:00 PM. From 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, sorry. For the third consecutive year, the San Gabriel Police Department will be hosting the festivities in the historic Mission District. We are where the entire community is invited to gather together for an evening of food, music, and fun, including public safety displays and various activities for children. Police, fire, and military vehicles and equipment will be displayed in addition to various public safety exhibits and demonstrations. There will also be city department informational booths, a light DJ, a bounce house, and games for children along with much more. Members of the US Armed Forces, city leaders, local officials, and community group representatives will also be participating in this event. So please bring your families and neighbors and friends to join us for a night of fun. National Night Out is designed to heighten crime and drug prevention awareness, generate support for and participation in local anti-crime programs, strengthen community unity and police-community partnerships, and send a message to criminals letting them know that neighborhoods are organized and fighting back. A thank you.
Thank you. And you have the t-shirts or the polo shirts? Let's see this year's design.
Oh, the color, I love it.
Oh, good.
Drum roll.
Drum roll please. Nice. So this year for everybody in the audience, National Night Out will be on August 6th here in the Mission District, right? And it's a, one of the really great traditions here in San Gabriel. Neighborhood watches also are still encouraged if you'd like to do your own block party, you can still do so. But this is a community-wide event for us to be able to all get together and raise awareness about crime prevention. And, you know, I'd like to also thank all the city departments that all contribute to making sure that this event goes smoothly and it's a, each one of our events is a huge effort and this one is no exception. So thank you all for doing that. Thanks to the chief too for leading the way on all the crime prevention efforts that we have going on. So proclamation for you, it says, let's see here, "We call upon all citizens of San Gabriel to join the San Gabriel Police Department, the National Association of Town Watch?" Town Watch?
Yeah.
Okay. "In supporting San Gabriel's 25th Annual National Night Out and the 36th Nationwide National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6th, 2019." And we proclaim Tuesday, August 6th as National Night Out in the city of San Gabriel. So please join me for presenting to Stacy.
Anthony? And Ricky? Not one.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Everyone just please slide this way just a little bit please.
Just get a little bit closer please, a little bit closer.
They work far there.
Good, okay, everyone look this way please. One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Great, thank you all.
Alright, thanks guys.
Okay, next item.
Item F is the grand opening of the Police Satellite Station. Presentation will be made by Police Chief Eugene Harris.
Welcome Chief. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. So with a great deal of pride that we announced the long-awaited grand opening of the Marshall Police Satellite Police Station. A lot of love and really hard work went into trying to get this thing ready. We thought it'd be ready several months ago, but we ran into some challenges and along with the help of the Public Works Director and his staff, the Community Services Becca and her staff, we were able to get a lot of things done in a short period of time even though we thought we'd have it done a lot sooner. But it has turned out to be a wonderful facility and we can't wait to unveil it to the community. Before I go further, let me thank you council for the support that you've given in getting this building kicked off. It really is going to be an important, I think landmark in the southern part of the city, putting law enforcement services down in an area that might not have had the amount of services that it might have been needing as a form of representation, but we plan on making sure that never occurs again. And as you go through and visit our facility, I think you'll be very proud of it yourself. Up on the board you'll see just a few of the pictures that we took in its current condition. That beautiful bald head on that top picture happens to be yours truly. We're sitting, we're sitting at the conference table that's there and, not to give away any secrets, but when we get to the presentation, there'll be some things that we talk about that honor some of the people who've helped put this together. But that granite table that we're sitting at was made by one of our reserve police officers in a shop by hand and it's our conference table for that facility and it is absolutely awesome. And when you get to see some of the things that our motor officers and our volunteers and certainly public works folks and all those guys put into this, it's really outstanding. So again, thank you members of the council, specifically you Mayor Poo for the decision that you made when we started talking about this at the beginning to look at a different building because the first building would certainly have not been sufficient. I don't think it was for a lack of foresight that I didn't see the other building, but you had the creative notion to say, "We need to make it look a little bit better." And it absolutely turned out to be outstanding. The facility that we have has restrooms and all those things, so it has really, really turned out well. For the grand opening, we've gotten members of the Chamber of Commerce, in particular Sandy Roscoe, involved and so, you know, if she's gotten involved, it's going to be a monster, right? So we're going to have a good time. And thank you to Becca Perez from Community Services for allowing us to kind of piggyback on the event, the Summer Night Series on that night. There'll be a concert and a movie. The concert starts at 7:00, the movie starts at 8:30. So our event will kick off, we'll start to kind of congregate at about 5:30 and at 6 o'clock the festivities will start for the grand opening. There'll be some speakers there, including yourselves I hope, and certainly a tour of the station. It's not a big station, so the tour should be pretty quick. But there'll be some food trucks out there and a whole lot of activities that are kind of indicative of what we do here in San Gabriel. The San Gabriel way, we really put it on and Rebecca's responsible for the bulk of that, so we're glad we could piggyback on that. So we will definitely see you out there on August 8th. It's going to be a good time and we're going to really unveil something special. It's currently under use right now. The traffic bureau has been in there for a little over a month and so we've been operating out of there with the traffic services and some other police services that are coming out of that building. The goal is to get it to a point where it works, it's open 24 hours. We're going to work on that so that we can always have activity coming in and out of that building. It has been a dream to get this done and we're starting to dream even bigger. We're starting to think that maybe that entire school property might be able to be a police station one day that fits with, in the framework of the mission kind of motif of the San Gabriel, city of San Gabriel. Who knows? Maybe we'll talk about that at some point. But again, welcome and thank you and we appreciate all you've done.
Oh, thank you Chief. Let's give him a round of applause because...
Did I forget to change this? I did huh? That's the sign from inside of the facility. The guys went out and made these things and a lot of the stuff that we got done, we did with donations. A lot of the things we did with, you know, very inexpensively. Again, thank you also to Paula Chamberlain and her staff, the finance folks. When we needed something, they came through as always and we worked it out. And so again, we're going to kind of coalesce with the Summer Event Series and I think that is the end of the presentation, so thank you very much.
Excellent. So August 8th, right?
August 8th, yes sir.
Just two nights after National Night Out?
Yes sir.
Okay, perfect. Everybody remember, August 6th, August 8th. Come on out and help us celebrate all the great things that the police department is doing, you know, in collaboration with all the other departments. Thank you Chief. That's, we're really looking forward to that and, you know, if it's open 24/7, maybe I'll be able to go down there and play basketball at, you know, midnight or 1 AM or something. So, question is, will you be there? I mean, can we get a game of one-on-one going? So next item, public comment. Could you read the, I guess the introduction for public comment please? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, next presentation item, sorry.
I was going to say Chin was about to jump out of his seat.
Item G is Southern California Gas Company Presentation on Energy Alternatives.
Good evening. I am Helen Romero Shaw, Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company. Before I proceed, the chief reminded me, since I'm on the board with him on the Asian Youth Center Board of Directors, and I want to congratulate the city for the honor they're going to receive by AYC in October. The city has been recognized for all the past support you have given us for so many years and it's overdue that the city be recognized, so congratulations. And the chief is wonderful to work with on the board, so thank you for giving him that opportunity. So I'm here, I can put my gas company hat now. I'm here to speak about item G under presentation. And the reason it's on there is because I had asked the city to pass a resolution supporting balanced energy in the state of California and to affirm local control by the city on energy solutions. SoCalGas has been in existence for 150 years and we service, we bring natural gas, start in Visalia, going to the Mexican border. We have about 22 million customers. Ninety percent of the residents in our service territory use natural gas to cook, to heat their homes, to do their laundry. So, so we're very proud of being a service provider and providing excellent customer service. But the state of California just recently, within the last two years, have established some policies that SoCalGas is not accepting. And that's why I'm here. The state of California, and we can understand because they're combating, they're combating greenhouse gas issues, climate change, and we are very supportive of all the policies. But one policy that we do not agree with and that's a pathway to electrification of the whole state of California with the, with the goal of eliminating natural gas. And so this is very hard for our customers to take because they prefer to cook on natural gas. They enjoy the lower bills, they're not as high as electricity. And a lot of businesses, and I've heard people speak about this, they have restaurants and they would go out of business if they weren't able to use natural gas. And there's businesses that run on natural gas like air conditioning companies. So, so that's one issue. The other is, the state seems to be mandating technologies to power buildings and again, to achieve climate goals, but again, at the exclusion of natural gas. They're not waiting or they don't understand that renewable natural gas is in the offing now. Renewable natural gas is an alternative to the traditional natural gas, which comes from fossil fuel. Renewable natural gas is derived from, no, natural gas is made up of methane, primarily methane. So methane is expelled in the air every day from the dairies, agriculture, municipal waste streams, and there is technology now to capture that methane, bring it up to standard, and put it into the gas pipelines. Mixes very well with the regular natural gas. And if we can do this, in fact, we have plans to do this by first starting out at 5% and then eventually to 20%. If we could even get 16 to 20% of the renewable natural gas in the pipeline, that would be the same as electrifying the whole state of California in terms of addressing greenhouse gases. And customers and business owners wouldn't have to change their infrastructure, they wouldn't have to change their appliances, and they can keep lower costs, their bills at a lower cost. So I'm hopeful that the city of San Gabriel will take a stand and demonstrate local control and on behalf of the constituents, you know, on behalf of the constituents that want to keep using natural gas. There are a lot of customers, in fact, quite a bit of our customers, quite a percentage, live on limited income. They're senior citizens, they're working families. Affordability of utility bills is very important to them. They need to be able to keep their families warm and food on the table. And if they had a tremendous high bill every month, then they wouldn't be able to do this. So the goal of the resolution, I did submit it to the city manager and I think I gave you all copies also, is just very straightforward. It's just demonstrating that San Gabriel is committing to doing its part in climate goal, climate change goals and, but that you really need the opportunity to use local control and support your constituents and the businesses that run on natural gas. For this reason, the San Gabriel Economic Partnership, the Southern California Billing Association, and the Restaurant Association are very supportive of SoCalGas's positions. So as I said, our vision, SoCal vision is to be the cleanest natural gas utility in America and we will do this by delivering 5% renewable natural gas by 2022 and reach 20% by 2030. And by the way, you may not know that 45% of the power generated from electric generators come from natural gas. So to depend on wind and solar is not really a good idea because we all know it's intermittent, it's not reliable. And natural gas, there's plenty of natural gas available. So I want you to consider the resolution. I hope you put it on the agenda for your next city So as I said, this, uh, our vision, SoCal vision is to be the cleanest natural gas utility in America, and we will do this by delivering 5% renewable natural gas by 2022 and reach 20% by 2030. And, um, by the way, uh, you may not know that 45% of the power generated from electric generators come from natural gas. So, um, to, to depend on wind and, um, and solar is not really a good idea, because we all know it's intermittent, it's not, uh, reliable, and natural gas, there's plenty of natural gas available. So I want you to consider the resolution, I hope you put it on the agenda, uh, for your next city council agenda, and adopt it. Uh, in our service ter- territory, we have already 57 resolutions, 11 in the San Gabriel Valley, and, uh, as a matter of fact, next Monday, it's on the, uh, Alhambra City Council Agenda under Consent Calendar. And, uh, finally, to end it, I will, uh, leave, uh, this brochure, it's called Imagine the Possibilities. It talks into more, into more details about what I've just said, and I'll give it to the Assistant Maryland, the Assistant City Clerk. And that's it, thank you, and if you have any questions, please, please ask me.
Yeah, thank you, and, uh, thanks for the presentation and for informing us, the Vice Mayor Machado, you have some questions for...
Yeah, I have a quick question. Is there any other state who's already, you know, excluded gas altogether from their...
Not that I'm aware of. In fact, uh, in fact, uh, when it's very, very cold, uh, sometimes we really have to watch our supplies, because the east coast and Midwest, Midwest use a lot of natural gas. And it's actually, um, produced in the mid, uh, mid-US, uh, and Louisiana, so, uh, that's where it comes from. I should have mentioned, uh, natural gas is domestically, uh, produced.
And then also, when we have a power outage, like, we've had some here, just like everyone else, what would be the, you remember?[701.23][701.23](laugh) We were at an event, and it was dark in San Gabriel, but...
She was like, she got there, she said everything was dark.
It was very dark. Uh, what's the solution that's being given when we do have a power outage? I mean, for exclusively electricity?
Okay, well, that's, that's the other thing that's in our benefit. We don't have power outage just because we're, uh, natural gas. And, um, I was told by some of my, um, colleagues in Arcadia, when, um, those winds, you know, a couple of years ago, were knocked out, all of, uh, electricity in Arcadia, they were able to cook because natural gas was there. It's reliable. It's, uh, people can use it all the time, and she was able to cook for her husband that wasn't feeling that well, so, so I, I, you don't, uh, and if we had really tight supplies, we have a protocol, and the, the entities that would be affected would be large businesses. They're the, you know, big businesses. They would be told, "You gotta cut back." But, we protect the residents and the small businesses. Those are our customers, residential and, uh, small businesses.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have questions? Councilmember Liao?
Uh, thank you, Helen. Um, you know, we had a meeting with, uh, the President of the California UTD Public, uh, Public UTD Commission, uh, Mr. Picker. And so, we kind of told him, uh, this is not gonna happen, uh, because thousands, thousands of our businesses are gonna be closed, and a lot of seniors, they can't afford to pay, uh, the utility bills, period, you know, and, so, hopefully, they can, uh, extend, because according to the schedule, we're supposed to mandate the law, uh, SB 1477 by end of this year. So there's, we're not ready. Um, so hopefully, we can extend a couple more years. The problem, the problem is, you know, what you want, clean energy, okay? Clean energy means, uh, zero CO2 emission. Right now, I guess, the, the natural gas line, they do pollute a little. But, as a matter of fact, we can work with the, uh, the, the other law is called SB 1383, and that's the one we have to collect organic waste, the green waste and fruit waste, and that turn into, uh, renewable natural gas. So, I, I thought that would be the direction for gas company to take, you know, uh, right away, we can have fuel for trucks, and also, we have clean, uh, renewable natural gas injected to Southern California, uh, gas pipelines. And so, this way, you can reduce the greenhouse gas emission.
Yes.
So, I agree, you know, the, the, uh, timeline, um, yeah, 20% by 2030, uh, that is, that is a, a, a good achievable goal. But however, I think you, we all can, uh, tell the state legislators and say, "Hey, this is not, uh, well, first of all, you're not gonna rely on just one single source of, uh, energy." You know, sometimes it's, like I said, you know, blackouts in the summertime, and, and hackers hack the, uh, electric grids, and that kind of stuff could happen. So, um, we should have inclusive, inclusive, uh, energy policy, uh, not just rely on one. Uh, but I think the, the gas company has to do, um, your part of the work, you know, you have to make the gas cleaner. So, that is the, uh, main concern for, for, uh, a lot of people, and, and so, I, I, I agree, you know, we should talk to all the neighboring cities. Uh, as a matter of fact, the, uh, partnership, they have 33 cities, and I believe they start taking action on this issue, and they try to get all the cities on board. But, uh, yeah, we, I, I guess we have to work together to save our, uh, community, not just the residents, but also the, the, the business. Uh, one thing I have question, because this is from the gas company. It said, "We, uh, don't use gas, and we use, uh, electricity alone. Every year, on the average household, has to pay $7,200 annually." That means, you know, average hour is 600 per month, uh, to the, uh, to the electrics, uh, electricity company. So, how did gas company, uh, you know, get that number?
Get that number? We, uh, we've done a lot of studies, uh, Navigant Consulting was one. We've had various studies done before we proceeded on this, uh, outreach that we're doing, and, uh, and then we've consulted, actually, we got it from the Building Association too. And so, they're the ones that gave us the figures. They said that it, to build a home all-electric, it would cost a potential homeowner 7,200 more, uh, se- 7,200 more, uh, it will add to the prices. Well, the housing is outrageous as, as it is now, so to add that, so, um, then, uh, let's say you do have all electricity, you're gonna have to pay, depending on your usage. We, um, the studies came out with like $350 more a month. Now, that's a lot of money for customers that are stressed, income stressed, elderly, low-income families, you know, that's a lot of money to pay. While you can just keep your appliance, then you have to buy new appliances, not, that's just paying for the energy. You have to go out and buy new appliances, get rid of your natural gas appliances. Uh, the cities would have to get rid of their pipelines, and we already put a lot of billions of dollars in upgrading all the pipelines to minimize any leakage. We have replaced all our old, well, we're almost finished, replacing all our old pipelines, and strengthening, strengthening the whole, uh, natural gas system. Uh, but as you read in the LA Times, I think it was yesterday, you know where the smogs coming from, and where greenhouse gases is coming from, mobile sources. It's not, it has, it's not from, um, natural gas, it's from driving and, uh, and heavy-duty trucks. If they could go to natural gas, the technology is there. In fact, we have, uh, allowed them to, uh, there's some incentives if, uh, trucking company wants to do the changeover. So, there's a lot of things that are happening. Right now, we're just asking for the cities that we work with to, um, just take a stand, just say you want balanced energy. You don't want just one, uh, pathway, uh, only electrification. You, you want the customer, your consumers, to, uh, choose whatever they prefer. And that, and, uh, and that's why, uh, I think you were, I think, uh, the League of California Cities was just kind of like throwing it back to the cities to decide on what they want to do.
Yes, I did.
And there's a lot of power in the cities, because as, the more cities come up with, uh, resolution, that's going to go back to, uh, in this case, Sim, Women, and Child, you know?
Yeah, I did bring this up at the League of California Cities, and, and, you know, most of the people from the northern California, they think, uh, this is not an issue, this is, uh, our local issue in Southern California, so, well, natural gas is supposed to be used all throughout the state. But, uh, according to the, Mr. Spiker, uh, right away, any new homes, any new homes destroyed by the wildfires, uh, only electric, no more gas for those new homes. So this is, it's coming, you know, I visit the Home Depot, they don't carry out gas stoves anymore, only electric stoves. But I don't see any electric furnaces, because that's something that's gonna cost our, uh, you know, ratepayers a lot of money, because we have to heat the homes with electricity. So, that's something that I think the state has to reconsider how to implement this law.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Liao and Helen for the presentation and then educating us. Can I just ask, is this pathway to electrification, what, has that already been passed now?
Uh, yes. The, this is, uh, legislation that...
1477.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Can you, can you just share with us what the bill number was?
Um, it started, uh, it, it started with AB 3232 a couple of years ago, and then last year, it, uh, it came back again. And, uh, I do want to tell you though, that, uh, at one time, they did, they were very specific about eliminating natural gas, and, um, the natural gas advocates were able to, uh, take out those words. But they left the pathway, they left it that they just wanted to see electrification.
And the governor signed it, it's passed both houses.
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. And then, um, could you, uh, make sure you get us a hard copy of your sample resolution, either to the city clerk's office or city manager's office, so it could be included in our Friday mailbags?
Yes, uh-huh, we can, I can do that.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for this opportunity, and I appreciate your attention.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item three is public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Pursuit to the Brown Act, the city council cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. In an effort to provide everyone with an opportunity to speak tonight, please be aware that all public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. You will receive a 30-second warning as you approach the end of your time. As a reminder, please be respectful of all speakers regardless of the position they take on any items. If you wish to address the city council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Uh, we do have one speaker's request card from Jorge Herrera. Mr. Herrera, okay, thank you, on what we were just talking about.
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, uh, Honorable City Council, honorable elected officials, um, respected, uh, Police Department, and, uh, city workers, honorable city workers, and respectful, uh, audience, uh, residents and all, and all that wonderful stuff. Um, my name is George Eli Herrera Avila, I'm with the Southern California Gas Company. I work for the Energy Savings Assistance Program. Um, what the Energy Savings Assistance Program is, uh, basically set up for low-income community. Uh, also, it's set up for people that qualify, that receive any kind of government help. What we do, we go out to people's houses for no cost, we install, uh, weather stripping, we replace doors, we replace windows, we replace furnaces, we replace water heaters, and repair them also. Also, one other thing that we do, we also add, add insulation. Now, we know this might be, that sounds like a very expensive, right? This is no cost to the customer, and it helps them out on saving the, on their utility bill. Now, with that said, the gas utility bill in general is one of the, well, I want to say, I'm gonna say it, it is the cheapest bill that I have. The cheapest bill, probably $20 a month, an average, it's 20, 30, depending on, on who, who's using it, and how many people in the house, right? But it is the cheapest utility bill. Now, with that said, I'm gonna take off my gas company hat off, and I'm gonna put on my resident hat off, on, because I live two blocks away. Uh, I am a resident of the San Gabriel Valley. I've been living here for about two years now with my wife and my two beautiful dogs, and I'm gonna call my wife beautiful, she is beautiful. She doesn't like to hear that, but she's gorgeous. She's smart, mostly smart, but a little bit of gorgeous makes her perfect, right? Um, with that said, let me move on to a story. Um, this year, my in-laws came to town to, it's my wedding, and they came from China, she's Chinese, they came from China, and the first thing they did, they started cooking. They started cooking, and I was eating amazing, but like a buffet in my house every single day, all right? The first thing my father-in-law said is, "Why is the gas not big? I want the gas bigger, can I make the gas bigger?" And, um, unfortunately, I told them, you know, unfortunately, we can't, we cannot do that, I, I could probably do that, but we, we, we like to keep the gas regulated to a certain extent, that it's not too big, because I know what he's talking about. He wanted to put like a huge walk in there, like what the restaurants do, and I said, "No, no, we're not..." Is it my time over?
Yes.
Okay, well...
Unfortunately, yes, but go ahead and finish the...
Okay, well, okay, so anyways, then, then that happened, and I'm just gonna say, what we gonna do with the gas appliances? We have a lot of customers, right? We have a lot of people, a lot of residents, we have, we're talking about a range, we're talking about water heater, we're talking about furnaces, we're talking about, believe it or not, dryers. I know that a lot of residents don't think they have a gas dryer, but I bet you, um, that you probably do, more than likely, a lot of people, when I was a service technician, they thought that they didn't have a gas dryer, but they, they did, and most of the time, you do have a gas dryer. Um, so you're gonna get rid of all of that, not only that, but you're gonna get rid of a lot of commercial equipment. That's very, very expensive, so we are not only gonna hinder the residents of our community of San Gabriel, but whole state, we're gonna give them, we're gonna pass the buck on them and rel- and give them this horrible burden, and then, not only that, we're gonna also ask our, our, um, our, um, the restaurants to do the same? Most of the restaurants are barely lasting, you know, they're, oh my God, you know, you see a restaurant come into town, and they only last a year, and then they have to leave for whatever reason, and now we're gonna ask them to do away with, with, uh, with the stoves or whatever they're, they're using to cook our wonderful food? I mean, electric cooking, are we even there yet? Are we even there yet? I, I, I don't think we are.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera, sorry, we, uh, we have to move on. I mean, and actually, you know, you could have combined your presentation with, uh, you know, Ms. Romero Shaw, and, uh, under, under the presentation, you could have had more time, but we need to be fair to all, all people in this public comment section. Um, your passion is duly noted, and, uh, we will be, you know, most likely getting this, this resolution and seeing what, uh, form of it we may be able to consider on our next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last comment, let's just keep...
No, 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 sorry, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, move, let's move on. Um, are there any other member of the public here who would like to address the city council? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item, please.
Item four, Consent Calendar. All items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or, or audience requests separate discussion.
Any member would like to pull any items? Vice Mayor Machado? E, okay. Anyone else?
Same thing, E.
Okay. I will also pull C and D. So, uh, why don't we go through discussion first, and then we'll... So, why don't we go through discussion first, and then we'll come back to the approval of the other items. So, first, I think, let's just do it in order. Item C will be first. It's the acceptance of the real estate interests acquired for the Ace San Gabriel trench grade separation project. Just have a very quick clarification. The documents that were in the appendices or the attachments said, "Not for recordation." I'm assuming it just is meaning that that particular, this particular copy is not for recordation. But ultimately, those documents will be recorded on title? So, here's an example.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that this version doesn't get recorded.
Right, okay. Okay, great. So, this will be transferring title of two strips of land as well as the, or not more than two strips of land, but assignment of some type of easements. On D, I wanted to clarify this, maybe Greg, this, yeah, this will be your area. This is the resolution for approval of an agreement with JMDAS to do the construction management inspection of the traffic signal at San Gabriel Boulevard and Commercial Avenue. This traffic signal is a condition of approval for a project that, what is it, 402, yeah, to 404 South San Gabriel Boulevard. So, just budget-wise, was this additional expense, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars included in the, I guess, eighteen, nineteen budget? Because it appears what we're doing is we're taking money away from the Great Streets program to fund this particular, this, the construction management contract portion. I went back to look at the CIP for the one that we just have approved and the one for next fiscal year and this fiscal year. So, I'm wondering, in those documents, if you don't have them, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars was approved in the nineteen-twenty budget for this project, which means that if the original contract for the actual work with Comet is only done at the two-eighteen level without the two additives, there would still be enough money under that, under that fund, the already budgeted amount, to also do the construction management, if you might say what I mean, right? So, two-fifty-five minus the two-eighteen would be thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. And two-fifty, but if we did it with the additives, it would be, there would only be like nine thousand, three hundred dollars left in what's already been budgeted for this current year. So, I just want to understand, you know, where the money, if in fact, are we re-appropriating, like reallocating from Great Streets to this just to do the construction management, and whether or not we can't do the construction management with what's already been allocated under the current budget?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do believe we are reallocating. I think this cost was realized after the budget was in place. The numbers were finalized, obviously, a while before you saw it, and changing them last minute was not ideal. The history of this project is we took in development money. We took a deposit of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I'm guessing the two-hundred-and-fifty-five or six thousand is that account maybe plus interest over the years. It was delayed many years by the ACE project. It was inappropriate to build it before ACE would demo and damage it. So, it was delayed intentionally, and in all that time, there was cost escalation. So, that is a reason we can't go back to the developer, even though that's not the question you asked. We are intending to transfer the money out of Great Streets. It was not in the budget.
I see, yes. So, because, you know, actually, in the previous CIP, that two-fifty was recognized as developer contributions, but that was not indicated on the current CIP for, or the one for, that's to begin nineteen-twenty. It only says previous funding of nineteen-thousand, eight-hundred-and-five dollars. So, I'm wondering, because the two-fifty obviously would not be enough either, as far as I can tell, right? I mean, at least not with the additives.
Looking at all the costs today, it is not enough. But it's also a five- or six-year delay, not the developer's fault. And there's certainly cost escalation over all that time.
What are the two additives that require us to reallocate funding from Great Streets or from street paving essentially to construction management of a street light or stoplight?
I am not familiar with that at the moment. I'd have to look.
Does any member, other member of the council have a inquiry? For me, I would rather, rather than reallocating funding for this, I'd rather have better information, because I don't know either. I didn't go back to look at the contract from whenever it was approved with the construction company of what the two additives are, because it seems like those two additives are what actually pushes us to the point where we need to actually, you know, shift funding from one place to another.
One, I recall one of the additives was another development a block away never ran, they're required to put in streetlights, but they never ran conduit to power them back to the Edison Service Drop. So, we did a change order to this project nearby. They'll have all the equipment on site. That was many years ago. It was missed. And we will be, it's a change to have them. That's one of the adds. I don't recall the other one. But it's kind of a developer, oops, and we need to straighten it out. We're using this project to do it.
Yeah. In that case, isn't there usually, isn't there usually some form of contribution from the other project as well?
They were required to put in streetlights, and they did years ago. They're there. They just have never been turned on. It was never, the project was finalized and signed off, but ultimately, they never did that last run of conduit to power those lights.
Brilliant. Okay, so, in any case, I would like to just have a little bit more information about this, if you don't mind, to understand what the additives are before we, you know, because at the same time, if we're taking funding, and would this be proposed then, what you're proposing here for the current fiscal year, the nineteen-twenty budget?
Correct.
Okay. Versus the last year's budget, right? It would be my recommendation, and, you know, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but to defer action on this item till the next council meeting, when we can have a little bit more information about what the additives are, that, you know, for which we're reallocating resources.
Okay.
Thank you. Item E, let's start with Vice Mayor Machaca.
Chief or Captain? Great. Thank you, Captain, for coming up.
Oh, yes, of course.
So, I just had a couple of questions. As I was reading through, first of all, this is exciting, because we have a list of accomplishments, and it's a great way to showcase it through a video. So, I was looking at some of the samples. I didn't get to actually view it, but I did see that the sample videos that were being shown at the IACP were from San Diego and then Pasadena, which are significantly bigger than our city. Have you seen any from the local cities? Not necessarily San Gabriel Valley, but just smaller cities to see if they're able to capture, you know, what we're trying to, be able to deliver that message that we're trying to do?
Specifically, smaller cities like Monrovia, Arcadia, I have not. However, again, I think the purpose here is to showcase what it is that we are doing. And I think that there needs to be a communication, another venue of communication that needs to be provided to the community members so they see what it is we're doing. And a high, a professionally-produced film, I think, would go a long way in...
No, I agree. I was just kind of questioning their experience with a smaller city versus...
Oh, they are very experienced. This production company is associated with the International Association Chiefs Police, so they can customize a video to showcase what it is that we are specifically doing.
Okay. So, you have no concerns that they'll be able to do a, do a smaller city versus San Diego? I mean, there's just a whole different range there.
We have a lot to be proud of, so I have no concerns whatsoever.
Okay, well, that's good. And then also, I just think that this could be really used, and maybe you're already thinking ahead, but not only to showcase to our community, to keep them better informed, but hopefully help us in getting grants. I mean, I'm looking at this as a revenue maker, you know, kind of like a grant-writing opportunity. Is that something, besides being shown, I mean, I read it, you know, it's going to be shown at the conference, but are there plans to be able to kind of launch this into different possibility, different programs, even for Bentley and Eddie, you know? I'm hoping they're going to be in the video, too, kind of showcase them. But is that kind of some of the plans that you have with this video?
Councilmember Machaca, you are absolutely right, and you're a big-picture viewer, and as Chief Harris is as well. I mean, we are, we are hoping to use this video for a lot of purposes, and one of those being, look at what we're doing and what can we do to market what it is we're doing and maybe possibly obtain additional funds. That will not handicap us per se, but we're hoping that it will augment our efforts.
Okay, okay, great. Well, no, I think it's a great, great idea. I would like to do it for all our departments if the funding was there. But I'm just so impressed with, I mean, I thought I knew everything that you were doing, but just to see it in writing, there is a lot to be proud of. So, I'm hoping they can capture all of this in those five minutes, so...
We'll see to it that they do.
Okay, great. That's all.
Councilmember Liao.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my first question is, who is going to IACP conference?
The chief. I would love to go, but he won't, he won't let me. Only the chief.
Okay, so that's in Chicago, right?
Yes, sir.
This year. And, yeah, it's a great idea. However, I think you left out one item, because you're from Southern California, and the people from the nation were saying, "Well, what do you do with homeless population?" So, I think we should include, even we don't have that many homeless, but I think we should include that in the mental health evaluation team, and also maybe with drugs issues and that kind of stuff.
Go ahead.
The homeless outreach that we're currently involved in is significant, and we intentionally left some of that off because we're dealing with a program called HOST, where there are other agencies that are involved in that. And so, there are some things that we need to get approval for before we can actually broadcast those particular elements. So, we want to make sure we don't infringe on any type of copyright or any of those kind of things. We can talk about our efforts, and we will in the video, but our host is actually something that's put on by Pomona PD, and we would need to get authorization in order to do those things. So, we just want to make sure we don't step on anyone's toes.
Okay, thank you. And also, because you include all the faith-based intervention, so all the religions in our city is supposed to be included, but you left out the most important one. In Southern California, a million, millions of Buddhists. So, we have this famous Buddhist temple on Mission Drive, just right next to La Casa, and it's called Du Fap Buddhist Temple. Every year, they have birth, it's called Buddha's Birthday, and you know that, thousands, thousands of Buddhists that, you know, will come to this temple. So, we should include that. That's very important.
Absolutely.
I think I have one comment for you, because you're on, not a front page, but you're on the newspaper. And thank you. You know, World Journal, thank San Gabriel Police Department for your engaging the program. It's called the Safety of Our Communities, and looks like you in the picture, and also Sam Allen, Ellen Sam, I mean, and Jack Yao, and Richard Shay, all of you, you know, in the photos. So, congratulations. You did a great job for our community engagement.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to congratulate you for facilitating that.
And this is for you. So, they claim they have a one million readers. So, hopefully, a million people can recognize your face.
Well, yeah, I'm trying to get into the movies, so hopefully that'll start. Should I go up there and pick it up, or is that okay?
We've been doing a SGPD reality show, like Reno, SG 911. Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention, and it's a clear sign that the community engagement efforts are working. And I agree with Councilmember Liao that, you know, I noted here that Du Fap Temple is not listed here, even though it is another one of our religious institutions within the city. My only note, too, is just to ask the PD as well of our city attorney's office to make sure that in the contract, we do own all the materials, you know, without any question whatsoever, all the copyrights. I know we will get, you know, it says we will get the finished product as well as all of the underlying footage. Just want to make sure that all the IP is covered. And if possible, I think the thing, one thing that I still get almost every single day are these scam phone calls, you know, and if there's something to be, even a brief note in the video about, you know, don't respond to these scam phone calls, but what to do in case you are, you do get yourself caught up in that. It's not something that's really a hundred percent within our own, you know, power to be able to address, but hopefully, there's some kind of hotline, maybe it's the FBI, or, because these are sophisticated criminals who are using, you know, robo-dialing, and they're using Chinese language, you know, saying, "This is the USCIS, this is the IRS, this is the consulate, you know, you need to call us and give us your information." And I've heard it in English, too, but I hear it more often in Chinese than I do in English. So, anyway, thanks for all your efforts on this. This is going to be, I'm really looking forward to seeing the finished product.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah. So, with that, I will move approval of items A through C and E. As presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. Let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Are you going to entertain a motion on this, or is it consensus?
Well, I didn't know what the... Is that what happened? I just want to make sure that people weren't waiting to...
I don't think anyone here is shy. I think we would have spoken up.
That might have been nice.
No, it just, I think it dies for lack of motion. Someone would have spoken up if they wanted to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that somebody wasn't expecting the chance to vote now.
But, you know, I do feel like we all agree, too, that, you know, for the item to be brought back, you know, with some further detail, this other, you know, this other information about how streetlight poles were installed without being enervated, that's also a little bit unnerving, to be honest. And I'm not sure why, you know, funding on this project should be now be going towards doing something which should have been completed for some other development project. I think some clarification is warranted before we start, you know, moving funds around, and if we can bring that back when this item is brought back, or, you know, then give me, you know, a better, clearer conscience in voting and supporting it. So, thanks for those efforts. Next item.
Next item is public hearing. There are none tonight. Brings us to new business. Item A, citywide speed hump policy consideration. Presentation will be made by Public Works Director, City Engineer Greg Devink.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I'm Greg Devink, the Public Works Director for San Gabriel, and I'm here to present what we've all been waiting for anxiously, adopting a policy on speed humps within the city. On January 15th of 2019, staff sought direction from the city council to see if they were interested in having staff research and develop a speed hump policy, beginning with a pilot program that would be fully funded by property owners. Council hadn't instructed staff to proceed with that effort. Tonight, you have our proposed citywide speed hump policy, which is the result of reviewing existing policies and documents from several other agencies, including Diamond Bar, Norwalk, Pasadena, LA County, and LA County Fire, and the Institute of Traffic Engineers Speed Hump Guidance Document. This policy will be limited to residential streets only. This effort began with a request from residents from, who live on Country Club Drive, who proposed to the city that they would fund the cost of speed humps on their street between Hermosa and Roses Road if the city would provide them. They cited chronic speeding... They cited chronic speeding and excessive traffic volumes from drivers using Country Club as a cut-through street between Delmar and Hermosa Drive or Las Tunas Drive. Country Club Drive is a light residential street with a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour and 20 miles an hour around the corner at Roses. The pavement condition on Country Club has degraded to a pavement condition index of 10, which means the pavement is severely degraded with a failing base material underneath it. There's a detailed advantages and disadvantages table provided with the staff report package as Exhibit A, but I'll quickly summarize it now. The advantages of placing speed humps are exactly what you would expect, a decrease in traffic volume, lower traffic speeds, and less accidents. The disadvantages include increased emergency response time, traffic diverting to adjacent streets, and increased accidents on those adjacent streets, increased noise and pollution from braking and accelerating at the speed hump locations, nuisance complaints from the residents, increased liability exposure to the city, and the general cost of constructing and maintaining speed humps. If approved, engineering staff will begin implementation with a pilot program with the residents of Country Club. In doing that, staff will review an application package and the signed petitions from the residents, complete a traffic study and the, and the speed hump worksheet to determine if speed humps are merited. If merited, staff will develop a cost proposal for design and construction of the speed humps. Staff will then return to council with the specific recommendations and seek approval. Council may at that time establish an assessment district to fund the speed humps, or simply allow residents to pay checks directly to the city into a new revenue tracking deposit account, which is much simpler. Finally, speed humps will be constructed and installed and evaluated. We may construct them while we have pavement contractors in town to have the large equipment and pass cost savings on to a separate mobilization, or avoid a separate mobilization. So, now, I am requesting that the City Council consider for approval the submitted speed hump policy, and if adopted, further consider proceeding with a pilot program on Country Club Drive. We are certainly open to revising the approval criteria listed in Exhibit C and included in the speed hump worksheet, such as adjusting the passing voting percentage or increasing the maximum traffic volume limits. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Are there questions? Councilmember Costanza.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone here tonight from Country Club Drive? I don't see any familiar faces. I would hope that they would have, did we contact them about this being on the agenda?
Somebody, somebody did inquire, I don't remember the name, but about a month ago, what's the status, because they've been waiting.
Mark, Mark did.
Okay.
Mark, what's his, I can't remember his last name.
And I did believe we replied it's going to council tonight.
Okay, thank you. On the policy under fee schedule, it says in the first sentence, "The applicant shall admit a fee in advance of the traffic study." So, the fee is the processing fee? Is it the fee that covers the total cost of the humps? It's just, I'd like it more specific on what that fee is?
The only fee I found in the fee schedule applicable to this at all, as the fee schedule exists today, is there is, in the fee schedule, an engineering study slash report review fee focused traffic study for $1,185.
I mean, just to make it more clear, I think what that fee is would be appropriate to add there, I'm not, and then if we did a one-time assessment, or if we create an assessment district, that would be for the street that is wanting the speed humps. And would, would that assessment, because the cost is $5,000 to $7,500 per hum, would that be a one-time assessment to the property owner, or is that spread out through a few years? Do we know how that's playing out?
I don't know about spreading out the payments. It is a one-time assessment.
Okay. And the $500 per year that it costs for us to maintain, the homeowners are also paying for that? Are we observing that?
My impression, or my opinion, is we should absorb that. It's going to be way too hard to document it, track it, collect 20 years from now. I think that's, for $500, it's not worth the effort.
And then, another question I had, I noticed when you did the spreadsheet of other cities that have this policy, we were one of the only ones besides LA County Fire Department with the 75% residents. Is there a reason why we went to 75 and didn't keep it in the proximity of 67 or 66 like other cities?
Yeah, the majority we found were two-thirds. This was drafted and researched by a former employee, who, I don't know why he put 75%.
So, we could make it 67 if we felt.
Certainly we could. It's, that would be more in line with most of the agencies we found. It may have been increased to 75, just to have maybe more of an aversion to putting these things in. They're not a recognized device in the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's not really in, in that realm recommended as a speed control device.
Okay. And I believe my last question, the processing fee, is that the 1,100 that you just talked about? Because we are the only city of those that were surveyed, I guess, that are doing a processing fee. All the others, as the last line on the chart, all others say none, or discussion only, so I'm just wondering why we are putting that into effect and what the fee would be for
I would say the 1,100 fee, 1,185 to review a traffic study, that is a processing fee. It's hard to sell it as anything else. It's a fee we charge to review their application and administratively move forward with this as a potential project.
Okay. And even though the cities that say they don't have a fee do have a study required, is what I'm seeing on here, so I'm just wondering why we're a city that, yes, is going to charge you, but the others don't, but they still do a study report, it looks like. So, just questions and concerns that came about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Costanza. I'd like to just piggyback on that really quick with respect to the fees, because I agree that they definitely need to be spelled out more clearly, but this may be a question for finance and/or city attorneys. We annually approve by resolution the schedule of fees that we charge in the city, or maybe this is, you know, community development, because many of those fees are under community development as well. Would it, adding a new type of fee here, would it require a similar resolution and/or amendment to that fee schedule? Because that's usually supposed to include everything under the sun that we sort of charge. Thank you, Paula.
Good evening. Yes, it would require a new resolution, and actually, that is planned to be in your next meeting, so if you wanted us to come back with something, we could include it on that one.
Okay, thank you. So, but, we need to specify or have a discussion about what that is at this point, or, I guess, Greg, you will bring back the recommendation of what that fee schedule is and when those fees are supposed to be paid, the timing of them? Or, I think we would prefer that, you just bring back the schedule, and then, you know, we can discuss it.
You're correct. I believe if we proceed with a fee resolution, all the departments that charge fees and, and collect fees and for their services get to review and modify the fee schedule to be eventually adopted.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions? Vice Mayor Machaca?
Yeah, I wanted to also piggyback on those fees, because it says for Diamond Bar, no fee charged, city has $40,000 annually programmed, so I'm wondering if maybe they already have some other, they're not calling it processing fees, or maybe it's part of their budget? Do we have any understanding of that? Because it, it doesn't make sense that no other city is charging except for us. They, they have to be charging something, but it, maybe they're calling it something else.
I, I can't say. I would suspect we would be the only city charging.
So, everyone has deep budgets, you know?
A lot of cities do not have speed humps. If you drive around, they're pretty rare to find.
Well, and that was my next question, because if you look at the cities, none of them seem to be our neighboring cities, like Alhambra, Roseme, Temple City, and so are we the first to have something like this, this type of policy, or?
In our immediate vicinity, I presume. Our former employee called and looked for those local cities adjacent. The closest one we found was Pasadena, who does have it, a policy.
Roseme has them, okay. I'm just wondering what Roseme does, if they charge, or, because they're not listed on here, and so, okay.
Councilmember Machaca, I'd like to add, there are cities that have a program, and similar to Diamond Bar, they actually allocate funding towards it. So, there are larger cities where they have a program that's available, and if they need to implement it, they have funding set aside to be able to do that, so they don't charge fees because they themselves allocate funding in their annual budget towards speed humps.
Okay, and that makes sense. So, we don't have any money that's set aside at this point?
At this time, and that may be an eventual outcome. We start with maybe some pilot streets where the residents fund it, we find out this is working great, maybe we do adopt a budget in future years.
But for now, would be processing fee, especially if they want this during this budget season?
Correct.
Okay. I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
Let's see, so, I, I notice that it says that once the whole process takes place, at the end, City Council would have to take a vote of sorts. Is, is that because, you know, there's an assessment, you know, developing this assessment district of sorts, if we decide that we want to assess the property owners? If, if they elect to just pay their share, then we wouldn't have to have the assessment?
If it all goes well, and they would all willingly produce a check payable to the city, we would not need an assessment. I think if we do go the assessment route, it does require council.
Okay, so that's why, because typically, if it's an appeal of some sort, then they come to council, but in many cases, we just allow either the director or the city manager to make that decision. So, it's because of the assessment.
And we could put in a trigger that if we're having difficulties, if there's holdouts not paying up, it could revert to an assessment that comes to council.
Okay, yeah, because like I said, we usually delegate the authority for speed humps. It just seems a little unusual to bring it to council. And there's no mention about speed bumps, so we're just focused on speed humps? If somebody brings up speed bumps, then we would have to have another policy?
Oddly enough, they're, they are kind of defined, loosely defined, but the speed hump typically is about 12 feet in length as you're driving over it, and you don't really experience an abrupt thump, and it's, it's mild. A speed bump is very sharp, what you typically experience like in a parking lot, that really, it's, it's a hard thump. If you hit that driving even 25, you'd be very startled. So, the speed hump is just a very drawn-out speed bump.
Okay, I'm just, I was kind of, kind of curious, because you started talking about speed bumps, and then we just migrated to humps.
Sorry.
But that's okay. And then, yeah, I also had questions about the installation petition, you know, most of them were two-thirds, were at 75%, so it was just kind of an arbitrary number that we came up with, on 75%. Councilwoman Costanza mentioned it, too.
I thought one agency was 75. Was it County Fire?
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, the county. But county's different.
It's also, it's a different metric, because it's 75% of the fronting versus affected residents, because you can not be fronting it and still be affected.
Absolutely.
They're different.
They're, yeah. I think we'll have a more robust discussion about that, since this seems to be something, you know, we should, it's whatever we set it to be.
Okay. And then, one more thing, the, the maximum traffic, minimum of 500, maximum of 2,000, and I'm just wondering if, would it be wise to maybe make it a little higher? Because we have, you know, 5,000, well, county has none, but just, is that number also arbitrary?
Well, when it says none, there's no upper limit. Could be a million.
Oh, okay.
That's what it means.
That's what that means.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe we need to look at that, too. Would, do you, do you agree with the 2,000, or do you think it should be higher?
I would feel more comfortable if it were higher, because that's a very narrow limiting range, and we would be bumping out a lot of projects, possibly just by traffic count. You'll see the cities that do spell it out are generally 5,000 or 4,000.
Okay, so that's something for us to also discuss.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think that upper limit's there to kind of establish maybe a blurred line between commercial streets, busier streets. We don't want humps on the very heavily trafficked streets.
Exactly. I mean, if it's, if you have too high a traffic count, then installing this would be, you know, too much of an inconvenience for, you know, for regular traffic. I think that's the idea of having the upper limit. But, yeah, we should discuss that issue as well. I've got those two at least marked as the percentage and the traffic count. Councilmember Leal?
Thank you, Mayor. So, my question is pretty simple, because you put advantage for speed humps for people that ride bicycle? How can that be? I mean, you know, if they ride bicycle, it's going to be up and down, and it's just not, not safe.
It's, it's a very gradual mound. I have, I live on a dead-end street in my town, and I have to go over five of them to get to my house. It's pretty mild, and they tapered down to zero near the gutter where bicycles tend to ride, because we don't want to hump and cause a puddle for rainwater. So, it's, it's very mild at the edges and higher where vehicles tend to travel. And another advantage to bicycles is if cars are, if there's less cars and slower cars, that's obviously an advantage to bicyclists.
Okay. So, another question is, do we have to consult with our trash hauler, you know, for instance, ethane company? If they have concern, was there heavy trucks, would that be damage to their tires and that kind of stuff?
Just from experience in my neighborhood, no. The humps are very mild, even the fire department's not offended by them.
Okay, okay, as long as they agree. And, yeah, I kind of agree with the 75% of residents, because even 25% disagree, and they might come back, because, well, you know, if they don't want them, and they can say, "Well, I'm, you know, in and out my house maybe 20 times a day, and I have to, you know, drive through the humps and eventually hurt my spinal cord, whatever, and there's a lawsuit," so who will be responsible for this liability? Is the city or the homeowners they want to install?
I think that one's for me. I, I don't like talking about liability hypothetically, because they, has a tendency to be a self-fulfilling prophecy when you make proclamations about it, but the city is generally responsible for the condition of its roads.
Okay, all right. So, for 25%, they disagree, they don't have to pay for, you know, for these fees on their property tax, I guess, if we've got access, you know, the fees on the property tax, so they don't have to pay, or they have to pay still.
The residents that vote no would still pay the same as the residents that vote yes.
Right, so there's still, you know, people that don't, not going to be happy about it.
The, the. The increase from 60, from two-thirds to 75% does force a stronger consensus among the residents. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing.
Okay, last question about this 85th percentile speed. It says over 35 miles per hour, but if this people that are coming from North Country Club Drive, their speed limit is 25, so they are not qualified?
No, it's, we would do a traffic study that would tell us what the 85th percentile speed has been observed, and the fact that we post 25 does not mean cars are doing 25. The 85th percentile might still be above it, 35 on Country Club, I don't know, until we do the study. But that would be evidence of a speeding problem, another merit for why they should get a speed hum.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Harding, any questions?
I think my comments have been covered, it's just, I think I'm good. I, I agree with the 75%. I don't like the other, the 67, simply because two streets over, you can say, "I'm affected" because they're throwing more traffic onto my street. It's just kind of a debate, because they're quote-unquote "affected." So, do you want the residents to decide, or do you want everyone else in the city, basically, to decide?
I agree with that as well. I was going to come out in favor. I agree with that as well. I was going to come out in favor of seventy-five percent, so we have a majority that favors seventy-five percent. I do think that, you know, we are considering this due to, you know, residents primarily on Country Club Drive. But this is a citywide policy, so we need to also consider how it will affect the entire city. My question first, just want a clarification, because there's a slight discrepancy between the memo and the and the Exhibit A. The five thousand to seventy-five hundred estimate on the exhibit says it includes signage. And that's not specifically stated in the memo, so I just want to understand, does it include signage? Like, because I assume you're going to, we're going to have to put up speed hump signs in each direction, certain distance from each hump, if they were installed. And sometimes I think that can be extremely expensive, we can have to get them from LA County or something?
No, if we just ordered standard Chevrons or a hump sign from Zumar, say, one of our vendors.
Okay.
I would say it's probably with a post, two hundred a sign. Not too bad.
Not too bad, all right. But, so that cost estimate does include the signs?
That's an estimate, it can. I don't know where the cost will come in. In my mind, if they were made out of hot mixed asphalt, we would do it as probably a change order to having a large paving contractor in town, who's all geared up and mobilized to do significant street work. And then we would just fund that change order out of this process.
So I think maybe the original discussion we had on the, here at the council level was before you joined us. And I think one of the things that we discussed was installing the rubberized humps as a first step, you know, initial trial phase, rather than going in, and it wouldn't make sense on Country Club Drive, for instance, where the pavement, like as you said, is a PCI of ten, and then you've got this brand-new PCI one-hundred speed hump that's made out of asphalt there. But, you know, if, but the rubberized one could possibly be installed, you know?
When you say rubberized, do you mean hot mixed rubberized asphalt, or do you mean the pre-molded ones you bolt down?
Yeah, I think we, and I don't know if there was a consensus of the council that that would be something that we would want to do before considering like making it super-permanent and in terms of hardscaping. Not rubber, I don't know, I'm not sure what the technical term is.
The pre-manufactured rubber ones that we would bolt to the street, that's what you're saying?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
It looks like there, I mean, there's a consensus of the council that that would be maybe first stage at least, or not? Yeah, not, so that, and I don't know if that cost might be different, I mean, it sounds like it should be different.
I brought an internet printout of one, and it was about two thousand dollars, and it covers one lane. So it's one hump, one lane. So it'd be about four thousand to cross the street. And we could share street information with the manufacturer and said, is your product going to warranty and be appropriate for the condition that exists right there? Maybe it is fine. They do anchor down, I don't know how deep. But it claims, you know, one person can install them and remove them, although they're seven or eight hundred pounds each. It's a very strong person.
Very strong person, yeah, yeah. Okay, some other comments I have here is, similar to, I think, what Councilmember Harrington was saying, and Councilmember Liao too. I actually like, in the city of Norwalk, it says additional petition. I don't know if we need an additional petition, but it said, you know, fifty percent of property owners living within six hundred and sixty feet of installation. I was thinking of perhaps adapting it and throwing it out for council consideration. If we would require maybe, like, let's say we've gotten past the seventy-five percent petition of the residents on the street. And then, but to perhaps provide at least a notice to residents within five hundred feet and solicit feedback. Particularly because one of the effects that we know this has is it redirects traffic from that street to neighboring streets. So, you know, there could be four people on a small, short, you know, on a street segment that wants to have a speed hump, and then twenty people living on the street backside neighbors of those that would, you know, have, you know, negative effects of that, which, you know, might have a problem with this. So I feel like we need, I mean, we need to build some process or protocol into it that also, you know, does a certain radius, maybe five hundred, six hundred and sixty feet, sounds very, pretty wide. Even five hundred feet is pretty wide, because that's what we do for commercial developments, that's what I sort of where I pulled it from. But some radius that, so that other folks in the neighborhood who are not specifically on that street segment can have an opportunity to tell us, hey, either, yeah, that's fine, or, hey, no, that really, that would really screw us up.
I'm not opposed to the additional notification, but I would suggest that it be, rather than just a circle, which is kind of a dumb definition of possibly notifying inappropriate people, maybe all the way to dumb or it might reach. I would suggest that if we do notification, maybe we have language that it's the adjacent street of the adjacent block, or something like that.
Immediately adjacent streets or blocks?
Those are the ones that are going to be really impacted. If cars don't like this, they're only going to detour one block in almost all cases.
But I would also say that not just the immediately adjacent parallel blocks, but also perpendicular as well, right? Because it will, it could impact traffic on, so, Country Club, for example, is north-south. But it will also affect traffic on Roses and Hermosa. That's the area that, you know, where this all comes from.
Well, if you just, for example, if you cut through from Roses down Country Club, if now Country Club is unpleasant, you're going to go one street over, you're still on Roses. You haven't changed the Roses traffic, except lighten it in that last block.
Yeah, but I mean that, you know, I would want to have input or feedback from those folks who are living on both that short segment of Roses, but I don't know how to define it, that's what I'm struggling with.
Well, you would get one block over, and you would reach the corner properties that are on Roses. Maybe not across the street, in this case, which is a golf course, but
Yeah, but I mean, would the other residents who are on Roses then also be notified?
You'd have the Country Club Roses, and the next street over, both of those houses on Roses would be notified.
So all residents within that?
And they're already getting the traffic, the ones on Roses.
Oh, yeah.
So there wouldn't be any difference. It doesn't change the traffic on the cross street.
Roses would, I know, the people on Roses would want this, want the hump, but then Alabama, yeah, well, you know. This is why we have to, I feel like though, if we cater too narrowly to one, to just one street, then it could actually, you know, mess things up, you know, in a bigger way. But It is a case-by-case basis. It's always a case-by-case basis, and the policy already includes that. But since we're setting policy, you know, I think that these kinds of protocols, procedures, need to be drafted in if that's, you know, the majority would like to have that kind of notice. I think at least notice with opportunity to provide feedback. And if it's all residents on immediately adjacent, parallel streets and any other
Affected properties.
Yeah, the ones that are on the perpendicular streets as well, within the immediately adjacent, right? I'm picturing a box in my head, but, but it will affect the perpendicular traffic as well. You know, by putting those speed humps on, in this case, Country Club, but on any street, you know, for that matter. On the issue of thirty-five miles per hour being the threshold, is it the case that twenty-five miles per hour is the speed limit on all of our residential streets?
I don't know.
Or
I don't know. I would suspect not. I think there might be some residential thirty-fives, but I don't know.
Residential thirty-fives?
Mine's like sixty.
Sam Marino, yeah, coming down, and you know who's, you know, it's ours. Schools for sure, and during, during school hours. Anyway, I think, yeah, over thirty-five is probably appropriate. You know, there are some that are lower. But that's my own opinion, I don't know. I was hoping to have more information on that. And lastly, oh, actually, two more things. One of the negative disadvantages listed on Exhibit A is safety, safety impacts. Adjacent streets may increase in number of accidents. So I know this, you know, city attorney has said that we don't want to have any pre-admissions of liability, but I assume all those things could come under the umbrella of potential liability. Because, again, back to the example of Country Club, they want to prevent, cut through traffic that's trying to avoid the stoplight at Del Mar and Hermosa. And, but then if we put these speed hubs there, and so people are now forced to go down Del Mar to Hermosa, and then there's an accident, somebody has this kind of bright idea, then, you know, that's something we could potentially need to deal with in the future, seems to me.
It's a legal response, and I agree that we don't know what can come.
I'd say if you're operating within the vehicle code, you can't hit someone else, that's the law.
Right.
That's the city attorney answer. If you're operating within the vehicle code, technically, you can't hit somebody.
Well, certainly, primary liability should be with whoever hit, you know, whomever hit, whomever else, but, but Right. I'd just like to put that out there for council consideration too. It's, since it's not covered by the MUD Sid, and it's something that we would have to make the affirmative decision to install on any street, you know, there could be these other ramifications. Not that I, if it, you know, it could, there are definitely situations in which maybe these kind of speed humps could, could work and be the right solution.
I do, I have one more comment you just reminded me, and it relates to Denise's question of why does all these have to come back to council? For us to put a device in the right of way, we need to have a plan to do it. We need to have city acceptance of it, which is typically council. Then we need to build it per plan. If we have all those three things nailed, we get design immunity. Without your approval, and we just do it, we may expose ourselves to an increased risk or loss of design immunity.
Design immunity, but if we, the council, are approving it, doesn't that still mean that we, the city, are still, would still be on the hook? No?
So the way design immunity works is, it has to be a discretionary act. So it has to be a discretionary act of local government, meaning an act taken by the city council. And it has to be based on a, so we're talking about design immunity, I think it's Government Code Eight Twenty Point Two, I'm going to, somewhere in that neighborhood. And so it has to be a discretionary act, and it has to be based on a apparently reasonable engineering opinion. So it doesn't have to be the, you know, it's an immunity, so obviously a mistake can be made.
Right.
And the immunity could still apply, but the, it just has to be something that appears to be reasonable at the time.
So having the traffic study ahead of time, showing the reasonableness of this is what would get us to that design immunity, that's what you're saying?
That's one of the components. We need discretionary approval. Council needs to say, yes, this is acceptable to the city.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Lastly, I mean, in addition to some of the other things, and I think there's still some discussion we need to have on other issues, but I wanted to round out my own personal comments. The information sheet, I like the petitions that, the draft petitions that are, would be sent out under this policy. The information sheet that is to be included with them, under, the first bullet point under disadvantages says, "Speed humps increase emergency vehicle response times." And I would just wanted to, I feel like people should know exactly how much it would, it would increase those response times. The staff report says that, what is this, the, yeah, the Institute of Transportation Engineers estimates an increase in emergency vehicle response time of up to nine point eight seconds per hump. So if that information could be added to this, that way, everybody, you know, who's signing a petition would have, you know, eyes wide open, and I don't want them to come back and say, hey, we voted, I voted to support having a speed hump, and then my house burned down. Why didn't you tell me that would happen? I mean So, okay, so, I mean, first, is there consensus of having notice of, to all other residents on adjacent, immediately adjacent streets, including the perpendicular streets that might be included in that?
When we receive an application, then we should send out the notice to nearby streets. And I guess we don't need their opinions, you know, because it's based on the application. And if we deny their application, I saw that we have to refund eighty percent of the application fee.
And so Jason, by notice, you mean notice, not petition, right? So just telling, you know, we're not giving them approval.
Right, but also if they would have something to say about it, yeah, come, or maybe provide them the phone number, you know? We could give them Greg's personal cellphone number.
Home phone.
Home phone number, no, just
Just waiting for this red light to come on.
So by definition, when you say adjacent, doesn't that include perpendicular? I mean, do you have to say, emphasize perpendicular, north-south, I mean?
I just want to make sure that that's included. Because it could, you could just be considering just the, like, parallel streets, right? In the case of Country Club, just Del Mar and, I guess, what is it, Alabama or something?
I'm going to step in and say, I think what we would do with each request is probably map it and look to see exactly which streets are impacted, and then we discussed, it would be case-by-case. And I think what we would do is probably be more liberal in our interpretation of that, and notice more than less. I think especially because if it is, depending on the location, we may have to, I think, maybe expand that slightly to make sure we cover all our bases.
Yeah, I agree with that, okay. Any disagreement with that, adding that to the policy? Okay. Are we pretty clear on the applicable percentage for the petition itself?
Seventy-five percent is okay?
Okay. The traffic count requirement, any comments about that? Councilmember Harrington?
I think five thousand is reasonable, and if you want to do four, I mean, I'm good with that, but, because two thousand's awfully low.
I don't have a personal sense of what that kind of volume means, like a daily count of two thousand vehicles.
What's San Gabriel, it's like forty thousand, something like that?
Something like that.
So I mean, you're talking about one-tenth of San Gabriel Boulevard? No, I'm just saying, so if you want to get volumes, like
That's like in law school, when, you know, the professor divides one term of art with another term of art. So you still don't know what it means, but but yeah, I guess, I guess one, like five percent of, two thousand would be like five percent of San Gabriel Boulevard on a daily basis? That still seems like a lot, but I don't know.
But I think, Greg, you recommended five thousand, didn't you mention that, that you would like to see it go to five, because based on what you've seen?
Yeah, I'd want to be in line with the other agencies. I wouldn't want to do a speed study, and everything looks great, and Country Club has twenty-one hundred cars a day. And we just tell them, nope, you don't qualify. I can't really explain why you don't qualify, but you don't. So I'd rather have a broader range of tolerance.
I would be surprised.
I guess?
San Marino does.
I would. Sit in front of my house for ten minutes and tell me you wouldn't put a speed bump there.
I mean, my street on Chestnut too, is a three-way between Ramona and Del Mar. I don't, I doubt we would get two thousand cars a day, though. San Marino's different, it's a north-south commuter street almost.
I mean, two thousand, if you take ten hours, is one, three every minute.
Okay, well then, do we want to make that requirement higher, or the window higher?
I was thinking five, yeah, five would be fine.
Five thousand? Okay. This, I think, you know, it's a trial policy, so we will need to make adjustments.
The intent also is not so much five thousand is a qualifier for your The the intent also is not so much five thousand is a qualifier for your street. It's really a limiter that we don't want these on really high-volume streets.
Yeah.
So.
Exactly. That's, I think that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
You know, whether if, I just have a hard, I don't know what it means, like, you know. Four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine cars versus five thousand cars, you know, on a street in a day. I mean, but but I'm happy to, yeah, make the adjustment. I mean, I think that adjustment's fine. What about the speed limit of, or the this? Can you actually also provide us with a definition of what it means, eighty-fifth speed, like eighty-fifth percentile or something like that?
They study the speed of every car passing over a one to three-day period, whatever we hire them to do. And they plot it all on a chart and it fits a bell curve, so that's just one standard deviation. It's where the norm is, the upper norm.
Gotcha.
If you distribute the data, you expect it to show up as a bell curve. And eighty-five percent would be one standard deviation over.
I see. Yeah, that makes sense.
From the, directly from the vehicle code, I don't know if you ever fought a traffic ticket, but you can actually make them do a traffic study. If they say you're speeding, he's, I know, I'm within the bell curve. You can win it every time, because no city, we try and find a traffic study in our streets.
I will take that to court next time.
Just saying, I've.
Yeah, I know.
We we've just done one.
One, okay.
It's it's for all our commercial streets. We wouldn't bother with the residential streets. Very cost prohibitive and a waste of time. But on our commercial streets, we've just done one. We're, we haven't adopted it yet. We're reviewing it with the police department and then we'll come to propose it.
I feel comfortable with thirty-five, because if that is the sort of upper norm, then then there is, that suggests that there is a speeding problem on that particular street segment. If it's too low, then it's sort of like, well, then why, you know, why go through the hassle of adding the speed hump?
If almost all cars are going below thirty-five, why do we really need speed humps?
Right.
That's the point.
Right, that's, I think, I think that's why I think thirty-five is, for me personally, I'm, but other council members? Okay. So it sounds like we've got consensus on the requirements of the policy, but also adding that maybe, do we need to add, excuse me, in the policy that the first installation would be one of these more portable ones, whatever it's, the nomenclature is?
Pre-manufactured.
Pre-manufactured?
I have experience putting down pre-manufactured speed humps in Santa Monica and ultimately in time we remove them. They are louder and more thumpy than a nice smooth asphalt hump. And they can come loose from pounding, especially on a degraded street. But we can certainly try it, but going back to the residents and said, hey, you paid thousands of dollars for something we put in and it didn't really work. We're gonna take it out. They're not gonna be happy about that.
Well, actually, I think that's a big concern for people who want to put in, you know, speed humps or bumps, because the noise is, especially late at night and if people want to just speed and the thumping sound is just gonna be crazy, so.
If we pave, if we pave them, they'll be quiet. You'll just have braking and accelerating. If we bolt one down, you'll hear a thud of a tire hitting it.
They usually do that. They, you know, they will speed up again and then, you know, and then the bump, so. Well, it it's their consideration, but we have to make it, I I guess we already know if they want to remove the speed humps, there's a procedure that they should know before they want to install.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So when you're installing a speed hump from scratch, are you going to the base or are you laminating over the existing?
I think at a minimum, we'd have to grind out some asphalt. And my preference would probably be the full asphalt thickness, just because if we don't, you're gonna have just a paved edge and it's gonna unravel and it's gonna get worse over time. So I'd rather cut a vertical edge, tack coat it, pave in that slot.
That's what I was gonna suggest, because then it wouldn't matter the condition of the street, because you're basically creating a a street section that's brand new.
For twelve feet, they'll have a new street.
Yeah. Well, you can do a five-hundred-foot long hump.
Yeah, and if they pay for it, that'd be awesome. That's the policy you want.
So my, so my question is, what if the the residents don't want the portable? They want the, and they're willing to pay for the permanent version?
I don't think the residents are aware of the downside of the portable. They may want it if I live three houses from it, but if I'm the one right next to it and it's thumping all night when my kids are sleeping or whatever it is, I I wouldn't want a portable one near my house.
Okay, so.
So are we then just going to just straight permanent asphalt asphalt humps? Because we, I mean, we're putting in standards here that are pretty high hurdles to reach. And then there's a removal policy as well, so, so, okay, then in that case, then, all right. I guess, you know, Arminé is reminding me that we should probably also talk about the the fees and whether or not we want to charge the fee to the residents as, which is uncommon based on the comparison of policies. My personal opinion is that I don't have a problem charging the residents for the speed hump if that's, if they want it. You know, we're actually spending all this time to develop a policy and then we'll have to spend all the time to get a contractor. I assume we have to open bids and everything else and da-da-da-da. You know, I think a lot of those residents, and particularly the ones who sort of brought this forward, have this idea, oh, you can just go and do it, but it's not really that that easy. They don't have an appreciation of the process and the work that goes into it. So anyway, my my own personal opinion, too, that that would also have a tendency to reduce, you know, like a. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely.
And and we don't have a budget set aside for this anyway, so we can't pay for it. Although we are going to, on a year-to-year basis, the five hundred dollars, but aside from that, we don't have a budget. So we we need our residents to pay for it.
Well, it's also a barrier, a glut, from having like twenty, twenty streets all at once and then what's the city with that?
Exactly. That's what I was about to say, yeah.
And then we're having to pick and choose between who we're funding and who we're not funding.
So do you think?
I agree.
Three thousand dollars would cover all the staff's time?
It's eleven eighty-five. That's our, that's our published fee for the traffic control's study review.
But that's already a fee that's already published.
That's an established fee we have.
Yes, we wouldn't have to approve that.
It's the only one.
We would just be applying it to this case.
But we, as we were just discussing with Paula, we would need to add a separate, a new fee for the hump installation. And that fee would be still, I think, probably, I mean, in the range of five thousand and seventy-five hundred. Is that correct?
For the contractor to do it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, one one comment that you made, Greg, was that it'd be difficult twenty years from now to collect the maintenance. Is it, I was, probably this is more of a question for Keith, is it feasible to collect, let's say, three to four years of maintenance in inside of the fee, knowing we're gonna have to maintain these at one point?
From from personal experience, driving over five of these for eighteen years, they look new today. If we if we build them properly with a full section of asphalt, they last a very long time. The the pre-manufactured ones are a maintenance pain in the butt. They do come loose and you have to go back out there and maybe move them a bit to get good material for the holes again. Those have a, I would think, a much higher maintenance cost. If we build them right the first time, they should last a very long time. And the five hundred dollars is probably the life cycle cost. It's gonna cost many thousands many years later. We're not gonna pay five hundred each year. They're gonna cost nothing for a decade, probably, and then cost something, so.
That's what I'm gonna capture. If we could have the entire life cycle cost in one fee, that's the best way to do it.
It might be pretty high and, you know, people move. You won't be billing the same residents and or.
I'm saying collect it upfront.
I know, but they'll sell their house and prepaid.
Theoretically amortize that cost to the next person.
Yeah.
That's the way assessments work.
Yeah, but in collecting a very small fee over many residents, it's, well, upfront is the easy way to do it. Distribute over time is just not worth it. It's, you you lose money trying to get it.
I agree. That's what I'm saying. If we could have a formula that passes muster.
Putting aside the technical issues, it is possible to do it that way through an assessment district or something like that. Or, you know, collect a little bit every year on the tax.
No, I'm saying all at once, the life cycle cost upfront.
Yes, it's, because you could say that's the benefit conferred on the property. So it would, it would legally be okay, but I I'm not addressing it at all from the practical.
And I don't know where you would draw the line. Let's say we put them in, we expect them to last twenty years with no maintenance at all and then they get fully replaced or something. Why aren't they paying for year twenty-one? Or, you know, how do we, where do we draw the line on this? It is a confusing issue to deal with. And I don't know the reaction when they see the actual cost plus the fee study plus the plan check fee. It may get up fairly significant. I don't know really where it's gonna go, but tacking on, essentially, they pay twice, right? The life cycle cost means you pay twice. You pay for it now and you pay the full cost of it to replace it later.
I think, I mean, I I wonder if it's, I mean, initially, I was just thinking that once the upfront, you know, we collect the upfront cost, then the city owns it at that point. We have to maintain it, just like we have to maintain it as part of the street network. However, if that installation fee, which has yet to be brought forward and and talked about, includes some percentage of the initial cost, you know, not in the in the stated fee that we're gonna be approving, but just administratively, let's say you just added twenty percent or whatever the percentage is, whatever, you know. The thing itself is gonna cost four thousand bucks, for example. You just add twenty percent to account for some ongoing maintenance down the road. And so the fee that we then tell the residents of that street segment, it's gonna be forty-eight hundred dollars, you know, allocated among your twelve houses or whatever, and therefore, you know, pony up.
We could, but in the spirit of open and transparent, we'd want to show the cost and show them this additional factor.
Do we want to, I guess, so it's up to us, do we want to include such a factor for the maintenance on?
Well, one thing, if we don't, I would like to have the, after a period of years, the city, you know, because we're taking on the obligation, what if we don't want it fifteen years from now? The city doesn't want the obligation. We could say, after a certain number of years, and if it deteriorates, the city can replace it with normal asphalt. It's a regular paved street, unless the residents, once again, want to pay to install a new one. That way, we're not locked, we aren't locked in forever. It's the residents who wanted it.
But I think we could always, we could always do that at any time, right? I mean, we could always just.
If we did it a year later, the residents would say, hey, we want our money back.
Yeah, no, I agree. That's why, you know, we probably wouldn't do that. But I mean, let's say we're ten or fifteen years later and we're saying, you know, we've only got this one or two speed humps in the entire city, you know, is this really working out for everybody? Do we want to maintain them that way or not? You know, we can always initiate a reevaluation process ourselves without having to go, I mean, you know, without having to wait for a removal request, I think.
Yeah, because, you know, according to California Rural Tourism, you know, every five years, people move around. So fifteen years, maybe all new residents move in. So it was, well, I didn't ask for this, right? And another thing is, you know, I'm worried if the streets, well, for instance, the north part of a Country Club drive, so many potholes right now. Do they, or if they apply, I guess, whose, city has to pave the streets first and then be, then install the speed humps later. But what if, what if the streets become bad again fifteen years later? So are we, I don't know, it's just questions that we have to keep up fixing our streets then, I guess, if if that's.
Country Club is in very bad condition. We do not have any intention of paving their street as part of the speed hump project. We're going to grind out twelve feet of the street and pour back a mounded pile of asphalt and roll it into a smooth hump and put out signs. The rest of the street will still remain degraded. So you'll be on poor pavement and a nice hump and poor pavement and a nice hump. And I I almost wonder if they want to keep the poor pavement to slow cars down and discourage cars from going on their street.
Oh, exactly. I was gonna say, if you had a five-hundred-foot hump, then it would create a speedway.
So actually, they don't need the speed humps, you know, because of the poor street condition. Nobody wants to drive on that street.
They might want bigger potholes.
Here's another suggestion. Uh, just let me throw this idea out then. Councilmember Costanzo is suggested by city attorney, is maybe writing into the policy that the expected, stating that the expected life of a speed hump is X number of years, whatever it is, and that at the end of the life cycle of each one, each hump, we would, you know, we set the expectation. We'd say we would reevaluate the efficacy or desirableness, you know, of 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 each, of each hump. Yeah.
We can. The the life cycle of a fresh, properly constructed asphalt hump is gonna be probably over twenty years. We're probably, almost certainly, gonna want a paving project on that street over that time span where these things really aren't detrimental. The grinder will just come right through like they weren't there or any different and they'll remove it and we'll pave the street. We could reestablish the humps or not at almost no cost. That'd be the cost of a ton of asphalt.
Again, though, we're not just writing a policy for Country Club.
No, I'm saying anywhere, even a street that's in good condition today, we will probably grind an overlay before the speed hump wears out.
Well, my my thinking was just that it would set an expectation for the residents who paid for it, that they understand that they were paying for something that has a finite life to it and that at the end of that life, we may or may not, you know, continue. Or we may ask them to re-up or something. You know, just so there's not, you know, if it's in the policy, we can point to that if it becomes an issue in twenty years when we're all still sitting up here.
I think I'm personally in favor just of saying in the policy that the fee may include, we can, you know, use vague language, may include an additional component to account for ongoing maintenance or or for, you know, maintenance of the speed hump, of any installed speed humps through its useful life.
But the word may is very discretionary.
That gives us, yeah, that gives us the option.
Okay.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Greg, you had mentioned previously plan check. Is that another fee that we charge them?
No.
I just heard it, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on all the fees.
It's a plan check fee of the speed study. That's what it is. That's all.
Okay.
We would not charge another plan check fee.
Okay, so I think, are there any other outstanding issues? I think we kind of have consensus, I hope, on on all the different parts of this. It does sound like it needs to be brought back for final approval with the with the modifications requested by council. Greg, any questions of us? Or Arminé?
No.
Okay, we're good? All right, so so move on to the next item.
Next item is public comment.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, we don't have to read the whole thing again, right? Okay. So public comment now opened. Most of the members of the public left during our scintillating conversation about speed humps. Any other member of the public like to speak to the council? I feel so lonely. Hearing none, I will close public comment. Next item, please.
Next item is city manager's report.
Happy to be here.
Thank you, Arminé. Um, next item?
Council comments and conference and meeting reports.
Let's start with Councilmember Harrington.
Just, it's not necessarily a city conference, but the conference I went to last week was the National Association of Pension Plan Attorneys. So it's indirectly, we we had a lot of discussions about pensions in general and some of the legislation coming out of Washington and the state of California regarding our pensions. And actually, tomorrow, Judy Chu's gonna be at La Sera giving a speech about some of the issues she's working on. Chu's gonna be at La Sera giving a speech about some of the issues she's working on, helping public employees actually eliminate some of the windfall provisions. It's like someone like me who worked their full forty quarters and then I'm, every time my pension goes up, I lose my social security. Like, and after a bit, it starts to go down. So Congress is saying, why are we penalizing people for taking care of their own retirement? And then she has a couple other tax things she's gonna be addressing. So it's a public meeting, so if anyone wants to come to La Sera, it's at three hundred North Lake. It's gonna be on the eighth floor at eleven AM.
Thank you, Joe. Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Okay. I wanted to just remind everyone about the Fourth of July parade and, and the, the kids' activity afterwards. I got a call today from Senator Susan Rubio's office and they're very excited about being there. And I, I was also told Assemblymember Ed Chow will be there also. So we, we hopefully will welcome them well. Second, I just wanted to make sure, I, I wasn't sure if we all decided, but on the presentation that was done today about the balanced energy solutions, are we in agreement that we're gonna bring back a resolution or is that something?
See it first.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll see it and then we'll, yeah, they're gonna bring it to us on Friday, a hard copy?
Yeah, I've asked for them to give us all hard copies of it, um, 'cause I, I just feel like if, if it were sent via email, I must have missed it.
I didn't see it.
I mean, you know, there's.
I, I got it, yeah. I think you got it too, so maybe it was just.
Uh, but yeah, it'll be, you know, after we see what's being proposed, then I think I'll work with the city manager's office to schedule or, most likely to schedule, you know, some form of a resolution for, for a future agenda.
Great. And then lastly, I, I did go to the Naleo Conference and a big topic of that conference was the consensus, or the census twenty twenty and specifically the question. And today we found out that the question is not going to be included. However, there was, there is still some concern of people, you know, not wanting to be counted. There is still fear out there. There were some really wonderful solutions that I'll be passing along to staff, but as one of the two council members along with the mayor were leading that census committee, but there were cities there that have been working on this for at least eight months and we had just a whole list of just really interesting creative solutions of really getting people out there to be counted. And as we all know, I mean, it affects from education to every type of funding, homelessness, grants. So it is very, very important that we get the best and highest count for our city. It's a decade of funding, so it is critical. We talked about also land banking. Cities concerned of, you know, we don't have any control over landowners who just want to buy the property and, and leave the property there undeveloped, great blight. So there were some conversations about that. We talked about other kinds of infrastructure, homelessness, affordable housing. So it was just a really very good conference, lots to do. And anyway, that was my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Leal.
Thank you, Mayor. So I attend the LA County Library Celebration because they won the national award because it's called the Library Journal. It's been around hundred fifty some years and LA County won the first place. And, and also the county librarian, Sky Patrick, also won the best librarian of the year two thousand nineteen. So this is double celebration at the, it's, it's most beautiful library I've ever seen in, in California, at this hunt, Manhattan Beach Library. And this all glass modern building and the second floor has miles, miles of ocean view and it's just amazing. And I, I encourage everybody to visit that library. But anyway, it was worth celebration. Another, well, two events I attend in our own city's community events. One of is the Asian Arts Talents Foundation. They perform, I guess, one of the best show I've ever seen for the past thirteen years. They've been coming to our playhouse performing, but this year was definitely the best. And also the Jazz in Pink, that was very popular because most of the jazz music, you know, they're nice and cool, but this group, all ladies, and she is met, well, they're gonna sing at the Playboy Jazz Festival at the, at the Hollywood Ball. And so they're famous. They're not, not just average bands. And especially the lead singer, she can sing popular songs. And so that makes it more exciting. People can dance to that kind of music. So, hey, this summer, we have lots of exciting concerts and events. So looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Costanzo.
Thank you. Armin, we're happy to have you here also. And looking forward to the Fourth of July event. It's always a, a great event, a great day to see people in the park and celebrate all that we have to offer in our, our great country of America. So looking forward to Thursday.
Excellent. It's been very busy since our last council meeting. I just wanna touch base quickly on the census. On June thirteenth, we did have that census kickoff meeting that Vice Mayor Menchaca had mentioned. And I think even just due to the media, the press about the possibility of having the citizenship question, there is still a lot of fear and reluctance within the community. So it is a part of our job then to make sure we try to encourage people that the process is safe. We, we do want and need to have that complete and accurate and fair count. It's very important for many, many purposes, including funding and representation. And so now that that question is seemingly settled, you know, I think that makes the path forward a lot clearer and we can be supportive in those efforts. The Tourism and Marketing Improvement District Committee, Steering Committee also had a meeting. Executive Board members were selected. And I believe that the bylaws and will be, the formalization of the bylaws will be the next step. And the first meeting was set in July, sometime this month of, of the, of the board, when it will be off and running on its own. Collections should have begun yesterday, July first. Councilmember Costanzo can confirm that they're, they are being collected. And so, you know, hopefully there will be a lot of great energy, ideas and energy on how to utilize those, those funds within the nonprofit that basically that's gonna be directing those funds. On June twenty-fourth, I attended one of the Metro East Side Extension scoping meetings. As I had previously mentioned, this is the southern half of the Gold Line that currently ends at Atlantic, I believe, in, in Monterey Park. And what route will it be taking from there? There's now the SR sixty route, which was the originally planned route. There's the, I think they're calling it the Washington Avenue Route, which kind of runs southwards along, along the five. And then there's the combined alternative, which is like an attempt to try to do both with an, an, a line that would go in between those two legs as well. So I, I think I would want, I just wanted to keep council informed that there is a significant amount of community, not from our community, but the, from the El Surino and some of it is unincorporated, Montebello. So communities basically a little bit further south of us and a little bit south into the west. They're really organized about wanting to underground a port, the initial portion of this extension, whichever direction it ends up going in. And part of that is to lessen the impact on the neighborhood and have even currently some of the impacts that there are apparently some negative impacts to the location of some of the stations and the lines and how it narrows the street then that, and therefore makes it, you know, more dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists or, you know, a lot of other things. So they're, they're, they're very organized and it's a very large group. I was there and, and they were in force. I personally advocated for adoption, you know, I, I wanted to support them 'cause they, they made one good point, which I'll share, which is why does Metro spend millions upon millions, maybe even a billion dollars to underground the line through, you know, to the west side, but doesn't see any problem with, you know, kind of mucking up the traffic patterns in neighborhoods on the east side. So there is, I think, an equity argument there to be made, which is why are the east side communities getting shortchanged versus, you know, some of the other communities where Metro is, is, you know, building transit? So that's just an issue I think to just sort of keep tabs on. And I personally frankly support, you know, support their efforts, but also advocated for the SR sixty line solely, simply because the combined alternative, I believe, would not, there wouldn't be enough funding to make it useful for either direction and therefore, you know, and certainly the Washington Avenue or the route that goes down the five would simply just be completely irrelevant for us. So that, that, that would basically mean that we would not have any Metro stop within a twenty mile radius of a, or not, that's not true. With, that, that, then that line would definitely just not serve our community at all. And then the remaining closest station would continue to just be South Pasadena. And then I also just returned from the U.S. Conference of Mayors and I wanted to say that that was actually a really, really impactful, informative conference. I find it more relevant and helpful than the National League of Cities, simply because when you have just mayors of, from cities of all sizes sharing best practices, solutions, strategies they've implemented to address some of our, the common problems that all cities face, it's, it feels very, you know, a lot of those ideas I think, think are potentially transferable. So some of the issues that we covered that were really, really interesting are on sustainability, immigration. It was great to hear firsthand experience from the mayor of El Paso, Texas, Mayor Di Margo, and how intertwined their economy is with, with Mexico. That he said thirty-five thousand vehicles cross the bridges, you know, over the, the U.S.-Mexico border every single day and how many people go, come back and forth. And basically, there's, there is no distinguishment in terms of their economy or their community, you know, between this side of the border or that side of the border. We didn't, I didn't hear any specific information about, you know, camps or anything like that, but, you know, we, we hear and see that in the, in the media. We talked about the census a lot as well and how people would be approaching it. And there were quite a few people there who were, you know, basically trying, making sure that we, we, we do get this fair, accurate, complete count. I think because, again, because of the media attention, it would be a shame now to, that there's not as much of a need for the fear that we still have an undercount, you know, and that the census was predicting, the census itself was predicting a six percent undercount. Infrastructure, economic development, there were a lot of actually great topics and I'll sift through them and see if there's things that, you know, to be, that we could, you know, I'll bring it to the city manager's attention first and then see if there's things that, you know, could possibly be useful for us. There's free services. There's a, one company that does a free economic development video. And so there's just resources like that. There are grants that are available through them as well. But in any case, you know, when budget allows, I would even suggest that we make this one of our more formal conferences that is sort of on the list. But, you know, of course, we as a council should vote on it and, and whoever the mayor happens to be at the time, you know, I think would have the benefit. Because another thing that is difficult is with not, when we don't participate every year, then we tend to, you know, it's harder to be engaged at the policy level. And actually, they are, have policy resolutions on a ton of things. I cannot even, I could not even begin to sort of get, you know, my feet wet in terms of what the issues are, but it covers a broad range, including trade, trade. And also, I think there was one about, you know, who the recognized interim president of Venezuela should be. But, which is, I think, a serious issue. It's just that one that, things that we wouldn't normally think about. And so the stimulation of ideas and thoughts actually was also, you know, very useful. So that's my report. And I wanted to also acknowledge comments of my colleagues here. The Fourth of July Parade will be on Thursday. The Annual Kids' Day and Fourth of July Parade will be held this Thursday, July fourth. The event kicks off with the parade, which starts at nine AM at Plaza Park. Following the parade, there will be a free Kids' Day picnic at Smith Park, complete with a barbecue, picnic games, community booths, watermelon eating contest and much more. Parade entries will be accepted the day of the parade at Plaza Park and we hope that you'll come out and join us for this fun celebration. I've judged that watermelon eating contest before. It's not actually that easy. Some people are like very, very close. And then I'll just go ahead and move to the next item of adjournment. The meeting will be adjourned in memory of Salvador Magdaleno at the request of Councilmember Costanzo. Mr. Magdaleno was a hardworking man and talented cook at various restaurants and hotels throughout Los Angeles County. Mr. Magdaleno came to the San Gabriel Valley in the early nineteen sixties. Once settled, he brought over his wife and eight children. All of the family members became U.S. citizens as soon as they could. Mr. Magdaleno is survived by his wife, Leonora Villa, and all of his children. And Councilmember Costanzo, would you like to say a few words?
Mr. Magdaleno's son, Sal, Sal Junior, works at our hotel and he's one of our best, most diligent workers that we have. And I just can't say enough about him. So when I found out his father passed, him and his mother were truly touched that we would do this honor for his dad. So thank you, Mayor Foo.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And if maybe a notice or letter can be sent to the family to let them know that we adjourned in, in memory of the, of Mr. Magdaleno, that'd be great. Okey dokey. So with that, we are adjourned. It's nine oh two PM. Thank you.